Good evening, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee to order at 6:30 PM, do notice having been posted. Let the record show that this meeting is being electronically recorded. And if anyone in the audience also wishes to electronically record this meeting, you should notify the committee at this time. Any such recording may be subject to reasonable restrictions imposed by the chair to the extent permitted under the open meeting law. Roll call, Mr. Larabee?
Here.
Mrs. Gagliardi?
Here.
Mr. Giliducci?
Here.
Mrs. Field?
Here.
Mrs. Rothwell?
Here.
Mr. Battello?
Here.
And the chair is also present. We also have with us this evening our superintendent of schools Jeffrey Schoonover, Director of Business and Finance, this is Lindsay Albinaz, and our reporting secretary, Robin Vaccaro. And also with us is our student representative, Ryan Silverman. I ask everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next scheduled meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee is Thursday, April 4th, at 6:30 PM at the Somerset Berkeley Regional High School Library. Under the first section of our agenda tonight, Student Achievement Teaching and Learning. Superintendent's update?
Sure. So, just a few quick items. First, each spring, each town's border registrars is required to come into schools and have a border registration for seniors. It's supposed to happen some between this time and early May. Tomorrow, Dolores from the Town Hall will be at all lunches, outside of the dining center, all lunches, with some voluntary border registrations for our seniors. I would like to extend a thank you to Mrs. Gagliardi and Bay Coast Bank. Bay Coast has made available to our students an app called the Scholarly App, where it allows students to create profiles and find scholarships that are eligible for, that pertain to their interests in college and careers. So, Mrs. Gagliardi sent me some information earlier this week, and I sent it to all guidance counselors and seniors yesterday. So, I'm hoping that students will be looking at that, creating their profiles, and trying to find some scholarships. And then, I'll be looking to get some feedback from students later on this spring to see if it was something that they think is worthwhile. If, I'm not sure how many people have been able to attend some of the concerts that we've had the last few weeks, but March is Music Appreciation Month, and we've had, last week, we had our All District Strings and Band Concert. Earlier this week, we had the Pearl Concert. Some great shows that were put on with students, depending on the title of music, grades four through 12, in Berkeley Middle School and Somerset Middle School, last night, night before?
Last night.
At the high school, joining the different choir groups and chorus groups from the high school. So, every show, if you've been, if you're able to make it, they're just outstanding. I know the first few were recorded by our Blu-ray studio. I'm assuming the same thing happened last night, so if you weren't able to catch it, I'm sure it'll be on YouTube shortly. And lastly, I did send some information to the committee in a memo, but we, as we've talked about several times, we applied for the Innovation Pathways Grant back in the fall. We found out in November that we didn't quite make the cut. We also found out that's pretty common, that schools on their first application don't receive the designation. We found out late last week that we've been invited to submit the final application for it. Liz Haskell and I have met several times with officials from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed who run Innovation Pathways, as well as some other groups that are closely working with DESI on this program. And through some persistence and going to some training sessions and seminars that we weren't necessarily supposed to be part of, but we made ourselves part of it, you know, we found out earlier than usual, earlier than what we're expecting, that we're advancing to the next stage. So, that continues to happen, and I'll keep you informed as we go along. The next application's due on the 10th. And in between then, we have on April 9th and May 9th, a couple of different seminars and training sessions for districts at this stage. So, we'll be heading to those, learning some more, and I'll bring the news back to you.
Can I add, wait, just, I think originally you said there were three areas that you were looking at, three?
Yes. Biotech, computer science, cyber safety, and, you know, that's under the umbrella of computer science. We're being a little specific the first time around. We're gonna be, some of the feedback we had was, don't be so specific with it, try to keep it a little bit more general. So, biotech, computer science, and something with medical assistance.
Medical administration.
That was the more specific one, so we're gonna try to broaden that a little bit, but yes, it's in the healthcare, administrative healthcare.
And would we be able to apply for these in the future again, to expand other?
Yes.
Pathways? Okay.
Once, once we have these designations, and most schools only go for one at first time, we're trying to get three, but once the process is approved, it's much easier to add other pathways in. And as Lindsay mentioned last week at the budget hearing, you know, there is components where it affects the foundation budget, so we'll be looking to get students involved in this. We actually could start enrolling students this fall.
Oh, wow.
If all goes well, but the first year or two is really some preliminary work in career readiness. That really needs to be the foundation before students can start taking the advanced coursework. So, but the plans, we'll find out what happens in late May, I believe, and then we'll be able to plan potentially doing some work over the summer.
Just put on your far-range plan, I did hear that EMAS Dartmouth is launching an initiative with the South Coast Development Partnership regarding the blue economy, so there may be some opportunities to partner with them regarding wind power and things like that, so that would be another area of technology.
Okay.
And they had a meeting where they talked about the fact that there will be a need to kind of train our workforce, and so maybe something that might be required.
And I did read something recently, too, about DCC and really being involved in the wind technology preparations that I guess is expected to happen in this area, so.
Yeah. Great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Any questions? Ryan, do you have a student report?
Yeah, there's a lot going on in the school. So, today, students in AP Language and Composition took a field trip to see Animal Farm in the New Bedford Theater. This week is also multicultural week, so there's been a lot of presentations on the Galapagos Strip, which I believe you'll be hearing some next meeting. Spring starts, sports are starting to get in season. Last week, math team won the playoffs meet for the second year in a row, so that was really cool. Tonight, there's an art gallery to feature some of the artwork by our fellow students. Earlier this month, there was a dodgeball tournament, and I believe the Mighty Ducks won. And lastly, as Mr. Schoonover mentioned, it's been a very busy music week with concerts for strings, band, and chorus across the entire district, all starting in elementary school and working your way up to where I am as a senior, so.
Great, thank you. And we also have with us tonight Grace Sedell, who is here to report on what's happening in Berkeley.
Hi, thank you. It is my pleasure to update you on the happenings at the Berkeley community and middle school since our last meeting. So, starting with the community school, grades one through four have been participating in the Kid Heart Challenge in their PE classes, basically learning how they can keep their hearts healthy and strong during exercise and everyday activities. On February 2019, oh, February 11, 2019, our third grade staff had the opportunity to work with Grace Marie Grino, and she's from BSRI, and they learned all about writing instruction. February 14th was Friendship Day at Berkeley Community School, very well celebrated. February 25th, we welcome back Vice Principal Ms. Cogar, who had a great maternity leave with her new baby Hudner. Ms. Cogar, Ms. Francisco hosted the preschool information night on Wednesday, March 6th, and they provided overview of the program, information about registration, the lottery process, and a tour of a preschool classroom. March 7th was an early release day for students and for productivity. The professional staff met with all MCAS test administration and also held a whole staff growth mindset training. MCAS tutorial groups are going strong. A district-wide professional day was held on March 11th. This includes staff meetings, trainings, and staff service awards. Linda Cohen and Madalena DeCorpo from South Coast Collaborative presented to students and staff about Google Chrome and Google applications to get them prepared for the technology at high school. And lastly, kindergarten registration will be held during the week of March 25th, 2019, which is next week. Now, onto our neck of the woods, the middle school. Professional development time has occurred a lot, focused on effective implementation of curriculum mapping, scope and sequence, and review and reflecting on student environment. Berkeley Middle School and Community School wants to make sure that students come in knowing that they are free and safe to be themselves. Our Camp Borndale Cookie Dough fundraiser has just come to a close on March 14th. Lots of money was raised, and for students, I believe they are leaving next week, so very exciting. Literacy and math coaches from Momenta provided rich and constructive feedback to our staff on what they can do better with teaching our students. Our MCAS math administration for English and math have both been showing great results with our students, making sure that their MCAS grades are higher than ever for next year. Monday, March 11th, we held a professional day, and our middle school staff learned CPR, growth mindset, and sharpening their skills on curriculum work. Our grade eight SBR test schedules have been administered to the students, also preparing them for next year to be welcomed to the high school. And last week, Juliana Richards, SBR test senior and former Berkeley Middle School student, will be here on March 25th to present to students a presentation about going to the Galapagos Strip that Ryan mentioned earlier. So, students will be able to ask questions, and I believe it'll be a great presentation. Our BAA will be hosting their annual blood drive here at Berkeley Middle School on March 27th from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. Feel free to attend. And lastly, our school has been having ongoing efforts to keep our safety and security plans at the forefront of our priorities. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. If there is no objection, I would like to take up a matter under topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance of the meeting. We were just provided tonight with a student activity fund withdrawal request, and according to guidelines from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, these expenditures need to be approved by the school committee. And so, Ryan, you're the president of the senior class, and I think this is, although I understand it's supported by all of the classes, it's, I think, led by the seniors, so could you just tell us briefly about this? Does everyone have this document, Student Activity Fund Withdrawal Request?
So, it's mainly led by the seniors because it's specifically about money raised by the seniors during Case Rallying. So, the idea was that we'd split our money between two charities, The Cure Starts Now and The Tomorrow Fund. So, part of our fundraising, we got a grant from Microsoft that basically said that they would match whatever we raised, and we donated that money to The Cure Starts Now. However, the Omen family in town recently created a new local chapter of The Cure Starts Now, and so, I think the other classes will be contributing money, but we'd like to take some money from The Tomorrow Fund and give it to The Cure Starts Now, just so they can get a nice even check of $5,000, I believe. So, that's what we'd like to have approved.
All right, and there's also a request here, I believe, for the balance to be donated Do we know why this, the amount on the request is $4,900 rather than $5,000?
I...
Yeah.
That's not...
We could tell them.
Okay, so, so there is, there's a notation here that says, "The original plan was to make the money raised by all classes of Somerset Berkeley Regional High School and donate it to two different charities, Cure Starts Now and Tomorrow Fund, each receiving a half of the total amount raised." With approval from the class advisors, a new plan would now go to donate $5,000 to the brand-new Somerset chapter of The Cure Starts Now. This is a new chapter of the organization that the Omen family has worked on in establishing. The remaining, after making the donation to the Somerset chapter, will be the Tomorrow Fund. So...
So, perhaps this paperwork was filled in prior to the suggestion of making it an even $5,000? Is that what happened, you mean?
Yeah, either that or it was a mistake, because I know the plan was originally to have that $5,000, so.
Okay. I think the forms were filled out on 3/18, and then the meeting was on 3/19, so.
Okay. So, in that case, I think we could approve contribution of up to $5,000 to the Cure Starts Now Somerset Chapter, and the balance of up to $1,511 to The Tomorrow Fund. And we'll have to get new forms signed by both the faculty advisor and the student treasurer, before the money can actually be dispersed. So, can I have a motion to that effect?
So, move.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Field, and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Great job raising that kind of money.
Thank you. Well, it wasn't just my grade, it was all the grade stuff, but...
You know, I never get asked to contribute to that, and I'm kind of a soft touch, so you ought to pass that word along.
I'll tell the juniors next year.
Okay. I'm surprised I escaped Michael Gagliardi's grasp.
It won't happen again.
He's coming for you, Fedecca, if you have the money.
Yeah, he's been trying to sell me chocolate bars every day, so...
They're very good bars.
They are good. I bought two, unfortunately, but it supports Fedecca, so.
So, maybe we, maybe you could tell us about that, Mrs. Gagliardi. It's also not on the agenda, but Fedecca is raising money for the group to attend the International Conference in, or competition in Orlando.
Yes, so they, so they're in the process of selling chocolate bars. They're very popular, so I think Mike...
Very good chocolate bars.
Very good chocolate bars. And they've also, they're actually, they have an online fundraiser. Some of you may have been asked to contribute to that. And they are also, I think, applying to some grants.
Yes.
Each, each member, I think, of the leadership at Fedecca is looking to try to get grants from local companies.
I think Mrs. Eric just acquired a $55,000 grant.
So, they're working very hard, I know, I was told yesterday, they're working very hard to cover as much of the expense as they can, and also leave money for the next year.
Great. All right, so the next item we have on the agenda is vote to approve the 2019-2020 budget. And everyone has before them the budget and assessment sheet. As everyone knows, we had our public, public hearing, which is mandated by law, last Thursday, and had a comprehensive discussion about the budget, and also had representatives from Berkeley Selectmen and the Berkeley Advisory, and the, actually Finance Committee, I guess, and also Chris Cadet, the Chair of the Somerset Advisory Finance Committee, was also present. We had a discussion after the public hearing had closed, and the result is the Budget and Assessment Sheet, which we all have before us tonight. It is the same as the sheet that was presented at the public hearing. There haven't been any additions or deductions. So, is there any further discussion on the budget? All right. So, if there is no further discussion, then I will entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year 2020 budget in the total amount of $17,609,464, with a net operating budget of $15,425,75. I'm not done yet.
Oh, you're not done yet?
No. The total operating assessment to the towns of Somerset and Berkeley being $9,488,846, of which $6,906,770 will be assessed to Somerset, and $2,582,76 will... No, I'm sorry, I'm not reading the, I'm not reading the adjusted, the final, final line. So, with respect to the operating assessment, the total operating assessment is $9,478,447, of which $6,899,146 will be assessed to Somerset, and $2,579,301 will be assessed to Berkeley. And a separate capital assessment in the total amount of $2,184,389, of which $1,601,557 will be assessed. Did I read that incorrectly?
Yeah.
$1,601,597,000 will be assessed to Somerset, and $582,792,000 will be assessed to Berkeley. Total assessment is $11,662,836, of which the total assessment for Somerset will be $8,507,43, and the total assessment to Berkeley, $3,162,093.
So, move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Larabee and seconded by Mrs. Rothwell. Is there any additional discussion? I would just note that the total assessment is down 2.5% in the next fiscal year. Somerset's assessment is down 4.5%, and Berkeley's is increased by 3.4%. If I might add, we had a very lengthy conversation about the effects of population shift on our assessment at the, at the budget hearing last week. Because the number of students from Berkeley will be increasing in, anticipated to increase in the fiscal year 2020. So, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of monthly invoices. Are there any questions on the monthly invoices? If not, I would ask everyone to sign the warrants, which we have here before leaving this evening. Next, under new business, is the superintendent's evaluation. So, I would, more for the benefit of those who may be listening in, we don't have a lot of members of the public here for the meeting, but this meeting will be televised. So, I just, for purposes of understanding this process, I do have a few sort of introductory remarks, and then we will turn to the evaluation itself. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education requires that all educators across the state be evaluated regularly using common standards. Most professional educators are evaluated by district administrators. The school committee evaluates the superintendent. The evaluation process of the superintendent differs from that of all others subject to this process, in that the superintendent's evaluation must be conducted in public pursuant to the open meeting law. All other evaluations are confidential. The evaluation process is a year-long process. Before starting the process, the superintendent's employment contract is reviewed to assure any provisions of that contract related to the evaluation process are observed. Next, district goals are set by the school committee in collaboration with the superintendent. Then follows a five-step process. Step one is understanding the evaluation system and the related criteria. This is not a simple process. The evaluation is based on four major standards: instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. In addition, the committee and the superintendent must establish at least one professional practice goal, student learning goal, and district improvement goal. Goals must be smart, that is, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant, and timely. Step two of the process, the committee and the superintendent meet to finalize goals, and the superintendent develops a plan. The third step is implementing the evaluation and collecting evidence upon which to base the evaluation. There is a fourth step, which is a mid-cycle review, which occurs halfway through the evaluation year. And then finally, the end cycle, end-of-cycle or summative evaluation, which is before us this evening. The evaluation form, which all members of the school committee have completed, is part of an extensive rubric which outlines the process for the evaluation. So, that having been said, each member of the committee submitted the evaluation on the summative form, which is provided under the guidelines of the Department of Elementary the summative form, which is provided under the guidelines of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Each of those evaluations were submitted individually to our recording secretary, who provided a compo- compilation of all seven of the evaluations. And we have before us that compilation, which we, we are all seeing as a compilation for the first time tonight, to assure compliance with the open meeting law. Seems to me like an extreme interpretation of the open meeting law to suggest that us receiving this compilation in advance of the meeting might consider some form of, be considered some form of deliberation outside of a public meeting, but nonetheless, we've followed that approach. So, I'd like to offer each of the members of the committee an opportunity to discuss their evaluation. So, I would start from my left, Mr. Patello.
So, I think overall, you know, Mr. Schoonover continues to do a fine job, you know, improving in many areas. I think, you know, some of the areas that we're highlighting now, like we talked about struggling students for a while, I think there is a lot of room for improvement there. And not necessarily on Mrs. Schoonover's spot, but the, the high school in general. And it doesn't mean that it's going backwards, it just means they've identified as an area where, where there's some growth potential. So, I see that there. I think communication remains to be definitely one of his strong suits. You know, the constant emails, you know, flood my inbox. So, always well informed as to what's going on. And I think overall, you know, definitely doing a pretty, pretty fine job.
Okay. Mrs. Rothwell?
So, I don't want to be redundant, but yes, Superintendent Schoonover continues to display a high level of professionalism at all times during meetings here at the school committee, or in subcommittees, or with negotiations with their labor workforce. He has always displayed a calm, level-headed approach, doesn't take offense, or at least doesn't appear to take offense to, to various items, but then will listen, he's an active listener, and then processes that information and makes a logical decision and a recommendation to the committee. This is something that isn't new, it is something that he continues to do and is definitely a strength for, for him and for our district. I had noted that there was a lot of things in evidence that he had brought forward that just demonstrates how he's an advocate or an ambassador to our school district. He's in the community on a consistent basis, if it isn't at sporting or music events at the school, but with various Chamber of Commerces or outside committees, and is definitely our role model for the school district, and has, again, always displayed a level of professionalism. The one thing that I'm always amazed in, is just his level of hardworking, his level of organization, and I brought this up in the key through eight because we did our evaluation last week as well, is both committees, I feel at times, forget that Superintendent Schoonover has two districts, has two committees, has two chairs, has two levels of initiatives, two strategic plans, and that's different for a superintendent that has one committee and a strategic plan for key through eight. So, there is additional work that goes there. So, your level of organization and dedication to both those districts is commended. I just, we just have to, as a committee, be cognizant of the fact that we, he does have two districts, to make sure that we're not losing sight of that. And that's not only for the superintendent, but also for administration as well. But as we continue to grow and advance in your due diligence and your persistence for academic excellence with additional AP classes and the technology, and trying to know what the waves of the future are, and making sure to keep with that strategic plan on that 21st century skills for our students is commendable, and I appreciate everything that you do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Field?
Again, not to sound redundant, with Mr. Patello and Mrs. Rothwell, but I want to start with one of the questions that's asked within the, the rubric, and that is rate impact on student learning. And Mr. Schoonover gets high marks here, and that's the number one priority that I'm looking at when evaluating a superintendent. In the short time that Mr. Schoonover has been overseeing this district, we have put in measures such as a one-to-one initiative, we have implemented a technology plan, we have implemented PSATs at, in, on the 10th grade, we have created an employee handbook, we have done walkthroughs. I mean, these are all major accomplishments that take years, and in the short time that Mr. Schoonover's been here, we've accomplished that, and that just scratched the surface of his accomplishments here in Somerset, Berkeley. One of the things that I would also like to note, that's not in here specifically, because as Mrs. Rothwell said, there's different pieces of evidence that are included in this to demonstrate where he's been proficient or exemplary. But one of the areas that's most important, that I would be remiss in not bringing up, is the level of trust that he's brought to this district. The transparency with his administrative team, the transparency with the budgeting process, the trust in excellence in what you bring with your staff is insurmountable and unbelievable to have here in the district, and I think it's a great asset for us to have, so I thank you for that.
Okay, Mr. Larabee?
Wow, you guys hit all the high nails.
Yeah.
We got to go through.
Detailing down here, as I was just saying.
So, a couple of areas that I wanted to highlight, that are especially important to me as a, as a member of the committee. The first is how well and how comfortable I am with the fiscal systems that are in place here at the high school. I've had the opportunity to serve in a variety of roles, and I can say that without a doubt, the presentation and the accuracy of what is presented on an annual basis astounds me. There are always things that, that change year to year, you can't budget for every little thing, but I can tell you that as a committee member, I trust Superintendent Schoonover and Mrs. Albinaz as much as anyone could possibly trust anybody. They, they, they not only articulate effectively whenever we run into something unexpected, but they do a very, very good job of articulating the budget and the needs of the district, not only to us, the committee members, but to the public as well. So, kudos there. And one other area that, that was highlighted was Mr. Schoonover's data, data deformed, data-informed decision-making skills. I have never seen so much data in my life, as opposed, as opposed to other areas, areas I've served in. Not only do we get called on to, to make difficult decisions along with the superintendent, but he always provides us with ample information to assist in making those decisions. That's been one of his calling cards for the years that I've been serving on this committee, and certainly this year was no different. There was a number of things that we had to decide on over the last year. I, I think I can speak for everyone in saying that the last year wasn't the easiest year. Override 2.0, the, the scheduling change and the negotiations that took place over, over the year, this year and years prior to, to come to a agreement on contract, this was not an easy year, but Mr. Schoonover kept us informed all along the way and did everything he could to assist in everything. So, he was a very frequent face in Berkeley over the override cycle, and everybody got to know him, and I couldn't be more grateful for his, his being a very hands-on superintendent.
Mrs. Gagliotti?
Again, I'm not going to duplicate a lot of what's been said, but if we look at two of the standards, instructional leadership and professional culture, I think that's where Superintendent Schoonover has really made a huge impact on this district. I, I would say on both districts. When we go to a meeting at central office and sit in the superintendent's conference room and see the papers all around where he and his staff are brainstorming and continually looking at ways that they can move the needle in, in terms of what the students are achieving. He continually looks outside the district for best practices, he continually brings them into the district and encourages his faculty, his team leaders, to do the best that they can. I think, I was really impressed with the learning walks that now have actually become commonplace, and in fact, based on what we saw, his faculty, his administrators actually do them as well. And I think that that really came as a result of Mr. Schoonover's taking over the leadership of this district. I think that, I agree with Mrs. Field, that has had a profound impact on student learning, a very positive impact. Management and operations, I agree. I am very impressed with the fact that when the budget is put together, he and Mrs. Albinaz really try to get input from everyone in the, in the district, and have focused on the goals that are in the strategic plan. And that's, making that kind of a guiding principle, I think, is really important. And we saw that very clearly in this year's budget process. So, I commend them for that, and for being very organized and meticulous about making sure that those things are in place. And then lastly, on family and community engagement, that's not always an easy thing to do, especially when you have two districts. But we do know that you're out there all the time, we hear it from parents, and we appreciate that. This past year has not been an easy year as far as communication, and even in those difficult stances, you've actually communicated very professionally and represented the district very well, so I very appreciate all that. And again, I'll say, as Mrs. Rothwell said, I think all of this is actually brought to a higher level when you consider that you're doing it for two districts. So, thank you.
Okay, the one thing that I want to mention that hasn't been brought up, I'm looking forward to, and I know we are going to get an EASK accreditation preparation, because I know Mr. Schoonover is going to handle that very well, as he has all his other responsibilities. So, we're looking forward to that. He's improved the technology programs in the school. The monthly reports he gives us are all very informative and keep us informative. He's always willing to sit and speak with you and talk with you about anything you want to talk about. And he does support everything, and I think the biggest impact is with the community. I think you're known in the community, people recognize you and know all the improvements you're making, not only for Somerset, but for Berkeley. And the Berkeley people are behind you, as well as Somerset people. And we trust you, and we know going forward, you're going to keep doing the same excellent job that you're doing now. Thank you.
So, being last, I don't want to be repetitive. One of the things that I think is very, has been mentioned by Mrs. Gagliotti and Mrs. Rothwell, that the people in both communities need to understand is the, the challenges that the superintendent faces, as the superintendent of two separate districts with two separate school committees, with a, really a limited central office staff. The people that we have there are terrific, but we certainly operate and have, have been true to our commitment that we would have a shared administration for the Somerset-K District and the Somerset-Berkley Regional School District. It makes it challenging for not only the superintendent, but the other administrators who serve both districts, and they're doing a terrific job in, in managing that responsibility. The thing that really excites me about Mr. Schoonover's leadership is his willing to embrace new ideas and innovate. So many of the things that he has done, like the grant application for innovation pathways, it's a big undertaking. He's working hard to learn the ins and outs of it. I congratulate him on crashing the seminar. One of, one of the greatest experiences of my life is when I crashed a reception at Brown University for Earl Warren, and got to meet him personally and actually talk with him. So, sometimes crashing things pays off a bit for you as well, as it did for me. But there are so many, so many things that have already been mentioned that are really changing our high school. I did echo Mr. Patello's concerns that, and we've talked about this at previous meetings, that we need to be servicing all of our students and recognize the importance of challenges that our struggling students face and try to do what we can. We're sort of compelled to do that by the new assessment format and MCAS testing, so it's a, it's going to be a challenge for us, and, but I think one that we're ready to embrace and take on. So, as I said, in my written evaluation, I think from overall, we have a consensus that you're doing a great job, so. I would just, the evaluation documents are public information, I would just sort of announce that under the professional practice goal, one of the seven evaluators rated Mr. Schoonover as making significant progress, and the other six rated him as meeting expectations. Under student learning goal, two rated him as making significant progress, and five rated him as meeting the goal. And under the district improvement goal, all seven evaluators indicated they felt he had met the goal. Under the four standards that apply, instructional leadership, one evaluator rated him as needing improvement, and six as proficient. Under standard two, management and operations, seven of the seven evaluators rated him as proficient. Under family and community engagement, seven of the seven evaluators rated him as proficient. And under professional culture, six of the seven evaluators rated him as proficient, and one rated him as exemplary. So, one of the things that, again, for the benefit of the general public, there is a document titled Evaluating a Superintendent Under the New Massachusetts Educator Evaluation System. This is actually dated 2012, so it isn't as new as it was at one point, and we're getting used to it. But one of the things that I think is important for the public to understand is where this document discusses exemplary versus proficient. It says, "It is expected that most of the state's educators will be ranked as proficient at first, as they build up their credentials and performance achievements to reach exemplary status. However, this is a confidential rating for everyone except the superintendent. A highly able superintendent who provides good leadership to a district may, in the first years of the superintendency, reach proficiency quickly, but not reach an exemplary rating for a while. This exposes the superintendent to the appearance of failing to fulfill the highest expectations, when in fact, it is simply a reflection of continuing professional growth. Moreover, different school committees will apply their evaluation scores differently." So, I think we, we all need to keep that in mind. A lot of the innovations that Mr. Schoonover has put into place are either still in the informative stages or early in the impact that they're actually going to have, and I'm confident that the impact will be significant as time goes on, but it takes But it takes a little time for these things to be accepted and to grow. So I think we are in a very positive situation. I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything further?
I would just like to add, for clarification for the general public, when we say proficient, you're absolutely correct in what you had quoted from the manual, but you also have to understand that there are many subsections under each main theme. And there are many subsections where Superintendent Schoonover was rated as exemplary, but the overall rating came out as proficient. So, there's a lot of really good things that are going on. So, again, congratulations for a good year.
Yeah. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, but one more thing that I will highlight too is, you know, you sit there, you do these reviews and you say, okay, what comes to the forefront, right? You put that down. Until you sit in a forum like this, you're like, oh yeah, I forgot that. I forgot that you could do that. So, when we look at Mr. Schoonover's, you know, record over the past so many years, it's like, he's kind of set the bar for himself pretty high already. So, it's like, you're already achieving this level. So if there's something that's like subpar, well, that subpar is probably still proficient for a lot of other people. So, you know, any of the negative comments that we've seen here are minor in comparison to, I would think, where a lot of other superintendents make it.
If I may add, I don't consider them negative.
I don't either.
They're constructive. And what you cited about helping to identify and assist our struggling students is definitely one of the things that the district needs to do a better job of. I mean, from, from me down, yes. That's.
I can read some more needs improvement.
Do you have, did you want to add anything further?
Well, just, thank you. I skimmed this already, but I will certainly read the comments with more focus later on. And, but, quick review, thank you for your thoughtful comments. And you were very kind and positive just now, but you've also identified some things that you think, you know, that I need to do something better, the district needs to do something better. So, thank you for that feedback in here as well. You know, and let me just say, I know several comments were made about the financials. I mean, obviously, you know, I can't take a lot of credit or much credit for any of that. We know that that really is Lindsay right here. And then, of course, sitting over there to my left is another huge supportive mine as well. So, you know, it really is a good team effort on everything in central office.
I think we've said it before, you have to put together phenomenal teams. Kudos to you. They're very dedicated, they show high quality in everything they do, and they always have the district's best interest at heart.
I always remember Bill Belichick gets a ton of credit for what the players do. And it all comes from the top down, right? So, when the players play well, it's because they have a good coach.
Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, I'd like to say that the student opinion of you is also very high, so I think you're doing a great job.
That means a lot to me, right?
That's a lot.
All right. So, the next item we have on the agenda is the annual appointment of the superintendent to the regional educational assessment and diagnostic services Reed's collaborative board of directors. So, we have a proposed motion pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, members of the Board of Directors of Reed's Collaborative are appointed annually. Jeffrey Schoonover is appointed to serve as the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District representative on the Board of Directors of the Reed's Collaborative in accordance with Massachusetts general laws, Chapter 40, Section 4E, as amended by Chapter 43 of the Acts of 2012, for the 2019-2020 school year.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Congratulations.
Once again.
Another meeting.
Another meeting you've gone through.
We can keep an eye out.
It allows me to.
All right. Stop poking the wound. Come on.
You said keep tabs on them. Yes.
So, under other matters, we continue to have this agenda item to follow up on the report on student and faculty bullying presentations. I didn't have a chance to talk to you, Ryan, so I think it's unfair for me to ask you to comment on that, but.
It's fine. I'm good on the spot. I said, I can comment, I can make something up on the spot.
Well, I think, I think it's a very important issue, so maybe, why don't you and I talk between now and our next meeting and then we'll.
Okay.
Okay.
I agree with that, too.
So, the next item is approval of minutes of prior meetings. Joint open session minutes of February 26, 2019. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mrs. Rothwell. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Next, we have the open session minutes of February 28, 2019. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
Okay. Six votes in the affirmative. Mrs. Field abstains. Next, we had, Mr. Patello, you weren't at that meeting either.
I abstained.
So we have five votes in the affirmative and two abstentions on the open session minutes for February 28. Next item on the agenda is the Somerset Berkeley, Somerset and Berkeley K8 updates. Do we have an update from?
We do.
Members of the Somerset K8 school committee?
So this is going to be a shared one. So, one of the things that's happened that's kind of exciting and pretty interesting is there was a facilities conditions assessment done of the elementary schools in Somerset. So, we basically contracted with an engineering group. That's correct. So they are engineering with.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. And so basically, they went through the schools and said, okay, we need new windows, we need new HVAC, we need whatever. And they presented, they presented that to us at the last meeting and they broke it down into basically three different priority levels. Priority level one basically means, you know, project addresses issues of asset protection, quality of space, physical environment, or regulatory concerns. That should get done within three years, that was about $9.2 million. Priority two should get done three to five years, that's about $7 million. And then priority three, you know, five years are out and that's about $8.4 million. So obviously, you know, they put it in their priority. I think, you know, Mrs. Schoonover and his administrators need to look at this a little bit closely and figure out, okay, what makes the most sense to do and what sequence. And I think we're in the process of writing up some articles for the town meeting.
Yes.
Right, to at least get that, you know, influx of capital to, you know, start working on the schools because, you know, the, one of the comments was the schools are generally pretty structurally sound, right? So it's not like we're in the situation with the old high school. So, that's, that's now. We've got to kind of get into spending a few bucks to make sure that they continue to be in that kind of shape. So, that was the big thing from the last meeting.
Yeah, this whole study is, again, just how can we invest in our buildings and make sure that we're looking at the long term? The numbers seemed, you know, staggering a little bit, but once you go through, they also, my appearance of going through it is, this would all be state-of-the-art, you know, how we would move forward, which would be the optimal. So, the committee is going to be challenged with how do we keep this an alive document and not put on a shelf to make sure that we keep that as a strategic plan? And how do we invest and enlist the community as well to ensure? It's definitely cheaper than a brand-new building, so the investment is definitely warranted on that part. So, it is definitely a good start and a launching pad to move forward in the future.
Yeah, if I could just, I asked Robin to send me a copy of that report after I saw the article in The Spectator about the meeting that occurred. So if anyone else on the committee would like to have a copy, just ask Robin to forward it to you. It was interesting, I haven't really had a chance to look at the report carefully, but it was interesting, the newspaper article seemed to suggest that the South School was in the best shape of the three in terms of what the needs are, the cost in relative terms, which kind of surprised me because I think it's the oldest building of the three.
It does have the highest square footage improvements though because the cost per square foot for those improvements are higher than the other two schools, so smaller, it costs more, yeah.
The other thing that's noteworthy, too, is like the improvements to North included, you know, putting walls up.
Oh, great.
Right? So, you know, it's not like that, if you were to keep the structure the way that it is, right, without adding the walls, I think you wouldn't see, you know, a huge number of improvements, right? Because that is, that is the North School, right?
It is. So, of the $24.7 million identified in that report, 6.2, just about 25% of it, is for the walls at North. And that is considered the highest priority, priority one. So really, two-thirds of the nine million that you mentioned are just for a project to build those internal walls at North.
And just to be fair, it's not just putting up, you know, studs and cheap objects, everything that goes with it, you know, like making sure that the.
Many of us, you know, we're involved in a high school project, we understand the implications of, you know, implicates all of the other requirements, in the room lighting, electricity, HVAC, which are often the most expensive. Putting up the walls probably pales in comparison to the cost of HVAC and electrical and.
Just even doors.
Doors, yeah. I think what you said is right. While they are daunting figures, if you compare that to the cost of a new building, that's really taking care of those three existing buildings, right? So, I think it now falls on the school committee to kind of figure out what those priorities in the town to kind of support maintaining the buildings, so we don't end up in the same spot as we did with the old high school.
I apologize if I missed this. What three buildings are we talking about? North, South, and Chase?
Chase, Chase.
I'm not sure.
Three.
Okay. And then in addition to that, we did do our superintendent evaluation, which I think I had alluded to in my comments, which Superintendent Schoonover did come highly regarded and proficient in cardinal areas as well. So, he's doing a fantastic job on the key through weight side.
One more comment, too, is we did have a middle school building subcommittee meeting and we met with the OPM and they just basically gave us an update of where they are. And so, correct me, what's the name of the phase ring where we're basically looking to hire architects?
We're in the feasibility study.
So, that's moving forward, which is exciting.
Although I think being in the, looking to hire architects phase is a little bit more descriptive.
That's the way I.
So, having mentioned the Chase Street School, I would just say that I was at the Chase Street School today to pick up my tickets for the Mason Stern Wonder Razer, which is next Friday evening at White's. So, just remind everyone that if they're interested in supporting that effort, tickets are available at the Chase Street School. Oh, we did have a report on Berkeley. Do you have anything further to add, Mr. Giliducci?
No. I think based to the fabric of stuff. I do want to comment on last night, though. It was fantastic, the music program that was put together. And the thing that I really loved the most is the boys choir. I mean, we have a tremendous amount of young men interested in the music department and Mr. Bianco is doing a phenomenal job with them. And they did, they did an outstanding job last night. I'm so thrilled to see these young men getting so involved with the music department.
I think it is, I mean, that program, the show choir and the, it's grown exponentially, so kudos to Mr. Bianco. I think, just from my standpoint, I like the idea that that music, that part of the music program is growing. I think that's, that's what we should be, very inclusive and giving that opportunity to as many students as possible. So, I think it's fantastic.
And the pit band is always fantastic in the background. Mr. Marshall does a great job also because the music is great. The music is always there.
I was just going to say, I agree completely. When I was first, first became a member of the committee and I went to a show choir sort of festival that was held at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, what, one of the things that stood out to me was how few young men were participating in our show choir group. And that has really changed very, very significantly to the point where now we have a separate group for the young men. I'm sorry. It's great progress. Mr. Bianco is doing a great job. I cannot take away from his enthusiasm or the enthusiasm of the other members of the music departments, faculty. Interesting. And I, I also went to both the strings concert for the strings program, which included fourth graders through our high school students. And then the next night, the band concert, which included fifth graders through our high school. They all do a fantastic job and we have a great system that offers this opportunity to students beginning in the elementary school and through middle school and up to the high school. So, it's an excellent program.
In fact, tomorrow morning, the New England League of Middle Schools has their annual conference each spring at the Providence Convention Center. And the executive director of the group is a friend of mine. She called me a few, maybe a month or so ago and wanted to know if we could, if I had any middle school students who might be interested in performing on either this morning or tomorrow morning for the group to sing the National Anthem and to get things going. So, a group from Somerset Middle School will be there tomorrow, kicking off the day for all of these middle school principals and leaders throughout New England. They're leaving at 6:00 AM. I'm not sure how thrilled they are about that. But, yeah, it'll be, it'll be nice to see them perform for a large group like that.
That's fantastic.
I have a question. I've seen an announcement from the North Elementary School that tomorrow they'll be dedicating Selena's book, Nook.
Yes.
At the North Elementary School.
At 2:00 PM in the North Library.
And is that open to the public or is that just for students?
I would think it's for students at 2:00.
I don't think that's been advertised publicly. I can.
It's come out on, it's come out on announcements from the principal that it's occurring tomorrow and the kids are wearing teal.
Yes.
The color teal because that was Selena's favorite color. I, if you can't tell from the information that's come out from the North principal whether.
I don't believe it was that to families, North families, I think it's really just for the students in the school.
Well, it was sent, sent to families, but I, it doesn't make it clear whether people should come or not. That's all I was just wondering. Okay. All right. So, we've covered the one topic that I was aware of that was not anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Is there anything else? There isn't? Are there any action items for future meetings that anyone would like to raise? Is there any public input?
There is. The one and only.
So.
George, you've got to bring your friends to these meetings. It's going to help the crowd.
So, I believe we will have a brief executive session to provide an update on the situation with the Somerset Teachers Association contract. to provide an update on the situation with the Somerset Teachers Association contract. So, I will entertain a motion pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee and the chair, so declares. We have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Is there any discussion? The committee will not return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Roll call. Mr. Giliducci?
Aye.
Mrs. Gagliotti?
Aye.
Mr. Larabee?
Aye.
Mrs. Field?
Aye.
Mrs. Rothwell?
Aye.
Mr. Patello?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone, for coming.